We'll go ahead and start the meeting. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, we'll move on down to the roll call, Ms. Michelle.
Counselor Broyles?
Here.
Counselor Veho?
Here.
Counselor Carson?
Here.
Counselor Hensley?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Counselor Daniel?
Here.
All counselors present with Counselor Gre... or yeah, Greggo, previously asking to be excused from has been declared.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item. Since we are having a hybrid meeting, we have Council Brawls on the Zoom. So we'll keep an eye out on him and then I'll be looking at the mics to see if you have your mics lit up. And then that's the way I'll take the order in which I see the mics, okay? All right, so the next item is the agenda approval. Counselor Veho?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda, excusing Mr. Gregel from the meeting.
And Mayor, if I could jump in real fast, if we could modify the agenda to move 3A before 1A, that will allow Mr. Mortensen to address both items.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Brooks.
So Mayor, then I move that we approve the agenda, but we... With the suggested changes by the city manager and excuse Mr. Gregel from the meeting.
Okay, we have a motion?
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Michelle, will you please take the vote? You could just ask, do we vote yes or no?
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Right? And that brings us to the next item on the agenda is citizen comment. The citizen comment section of the agenda is where we allow citizens to come to say a few words if they like. We have a podium and we also have instructions on Zoom to allow you to be unmuted to where you can make comments if you choose to do so. We'll first acknowledge anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments. We do ask that you keep your comments below three minutes. If you're still talking within the three, within the three minute mark, I will ask you kindly to end your comments at that time. At this time, I don't see anyone in the audience who are coming up to the podium. So now we'll go ahead and move to the attendees. And I'm not for sure if you see any attendees, Ms. Michelle.
I do see three attendees, but I do not see any of them with their hands up.
Okay, so what we usually do is give brief instructions to how you can... If you want to raise your hand, you can use the hand, raise your hand feature and you can be recognized. Or there's a option, what is that option? Does anyone know?
I believe it's star nine.
Okay.
If you're on a...
Or star nine if you're on Zoom. On the phone. Okay. I don't see any hands raised. All right, so we'll go ahead and close the citizen comment section. And we'll go to ceremonial items. Designating of July as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Alamosa. Since we do have our Parks and Rec Director here, Andy, I don't know if you wanted to come and say a few brief words before I read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Not much to say other than we feel really well supported here in this community and that's a reflection of you. So when we look at National Park and Recreation Month, we're just grateful for your support and in all it means to our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll read this proclamation and then we'll bring it down and present it to you, okay? All right, thank you. Proclamation designating July as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas, parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Alamosa. And whereas our parks and recreation are vital, vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas, parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally and physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansions of a local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas, parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas, our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas, Alamosa recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Alamosa City Council that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Alamosa. Signed by Ty Coleman, Mayor. The council will go down and will present this proclamation. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. We have Consent Calendar A.
Okay, Mayor, Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay. Not? Ms. Michelle, will you please take the vote?
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Christina Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, on the regular business, presentations from an outside agency. National Park Campaign Recap. All right, we have Kail here with us.
Well, I'm gonna use this bigger one because Andy did and I feel like I kind of have to stay with that standard. Thank you, Council, for having me here tonight. I'm with the Alamosa Local Marketing District and the Alamosa Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I'm here basically to come and tell you how your funds did in the support that was for the National Parks Week and the proclamation that we did in April. So I'll just go over our kind of our partnerships, who always involved, the purpose, participation, branding, promotions, and events. But first and foremost, thank you from a city perspective and as council members for supporting this cause. We really did feel like it was a cause, not just, not just a program or a project. Coming out of COVID, there was a lot of intense to try to get travel back and to get traveler spending back up. And I think we accomplished that and I'll show you some of those figures tonight. So the purpose was to celebrate the economic impact that the National Park brings to the San Luis Valley. We want to increase traveler spending in the springtime, which is an off-season for us, and then get that spending to local businesses. We had forty-seven businesses participate. There were five attractions, twenty-six restaurants, sixteen retail, and then thirteen of the participating lodging facilities were the ones distributing these vouchers that we did. This was the branding that we used. That bottom one was the voucher front backside of it. We had stickers, we had the flags that were put up all downtown, I'm sure you guys saw. And then we had these interactive engaging posters that we put out in front of the businesses, community members, entities, organizations that you guys also did as well. We ran social media, we promoted this all over the place. And here's kind of a short video what we did on social media to kind of help boost this program. So you're not missing any words with this, it really is just music. It was a simple promotion that we ran on there. There we go. A little bit later on in this presentation, we'll show you what really those impacts were on social media. So our website, we created a few special landing pages for this promotion, for this program to promote the sand dunes and National Park Month. We created a word cloud where people who visited the website could give a one word, what they felt about the sand dunes, show their expression towards it. And that's kind of that heart-shaped box that you're seeing at the bottom there. Those were the words that visitors to the website put in. We did have custom, custom content to promote events and overall program. The specific page for the National Park saw one thousand three hundred and thirteen-page sessions for the month of April. Alamosa.org as a whole, though, saw twenty-one thousand two hundred and forty-one users in April of 2021. For comparison, if we were to look over 2020, and we all know 2020, right? So we actually are looking this year at comparing to 2020, we're gonna compare to 2019. But we did see a two hundred and twenty-two percent increase over 2020, but even a forty-seven percent increase in that same month over 2019. Social media, our paid campaign resulted in one hundred and forty-five thousand reach and about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand impressions, which is point zero zero three four cost per impressions when we put some ad money behind that, which is well above the industry average. So we were really pleased with that result on our social media. People loved this, they were sharing it, they were engaging with it. We also did see an organic Facebook reach of fifty-two thousand six hundred and thirteen, which is a two hundred and thirty-eight percent increase from 2020. The paid reach as well, it amounts to about a fifteen-hundred increase reach for April of 2021. The campaign was featured on Twitter, Instagram, as well as where we saw great results from this purely organic campaign. The Twitter impressions, Instagram impressions, you can see the numbers there, I won't read them through you all and bore you guys to death here. But overall, social media, this campaign did really well, which meant the exposure for Alamosa and visit Alamosa and the sand dunes had a really far reach on it. You kind of see to the left there, those are examples of what the posts that we ran through the month of April were. We had a few events throughout the month, both by the National Park as well as our office and our Welcome Center. We did host a kickoff celebration at the Welcome Center. Mayor Coleman read them, presented the Superintendent Pam Rice with a proclamation declaring April to be the Great Sand Dunes National Park Appreciation Month. It was followed by a ceremony with the Junior Ranger activities and games in the Welcome Center. The National Park Rangers hosted Bark in the Park at Cole Park, which was a ranger-led hike highlighting the bark principles that they have at the National Park. And then throughout the month of April, we had games, interactive, engaging things. They could play this little Plinko game to win prizes, socks, stickers, all the fun things. And we did that throughout the month of April. So now to the numbers, right? We did this investment, we tried this new program, we kicked it off. We got in, you know, we got support from the city, the county, San Luis Valley Federal Bank as well. So now we need to report you guys on the numbers and how your investment kind of went, right? So we had six hundred and eighty-five vouchers dispersed through the lodging properties, meaning we touched base with six hundred and eighty-five guests through our hotels. One hundred and seventy-one of those were redeemed throughout the businesses. So twenty-eight of the forty-seven businesses that participated saw a voucher come through their door. It's about a twenty-five percent redemption rate. We had higher hopes, I think that's one area that we want to improve upon. But if we look at the industry average as far as coupon redemptions and those sorts of deals go, it's above that. So we're happy in that sense, but we still wanted to do better. Direct traveler spending from these vouchers. So we asked the restaurants and the retail to track their receipts and include those when we paid them out on these vouchers. Some of them got the concept, some didn't. But we were able to at least average it and know they at least spent ten dollars, right, through that voucher. So we know there was at least almost five thousand dollars spent within our local businesses. We assume that's higher, but we're, we're gonna be conservative on this. The average spend per voucher was at about twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents for the ones that we're tracking. Overall, just on the voucher program and the expenditures there, we saw a hundred and ninety-two percent return on investment with that program. So overall program impact, right, because this served two purposes. We wanted to get money into the local businesses and we wanted to get travelers in hotels. So we know that we reached six hundred and eighty-five guests. The average hotel rate that we're able to measure in the month of April was eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. All right, so total hotel impact of sixty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-five just in the month of April. Combine that with the voucher program, we have sixty-six thousand five hundred and eighty and fifty-three cents. The total program spend was about six thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars, leaving us at about nine hundred and thirty-seven percent on a return on investment. So for every dollar we spent, we saw nine dollars and thirty-seven cents on return. Overall, with the sand dunes visitation, though, and I think this is where you're gonna see the largest impact and it's continuing. Thirty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-four visitors came through the gates at National Park. It's the highest April they've ever had. Followed by the highest May they've ever had, eighty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. Just looked at the numbers yesterday for June, they had a hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-four coming through the gates. That's the highest month at all that they've ever had through there. So the travelers are here, right? And we felt like this program is a good way to kick that off. So we talked to the retails, we talked to the hotels, we got really good feedback. The businesses loved this, they engaged, they participated, they put posters up. They found different ways of promoting this or building displays within their windows. And you can kind of see through there Scott Graber with the brewery, Wendy with Locavores, Irene, I mean, they were all thrilled with the program and they want to see it again. So basically what I'm leaning at is we're gonna do this again. I think we'll change a bit of how we do this. There might be a new few aspects. We're getting ideas. And so certainly if you guys have ideas on how we can improve this program, we're all ears. But we will look to do this again, mainly because we got this participation from the businesses, we have their engagement and we want to continue that. So what we learned, right, average redemption rate on coupons is low. Next year, we'd like to increase the number dispersed through the hotels. We don't want to limit that. We feel now comfortable that we can expand that past a seven hundred and know that, you know, we want to float around twenty-five to maybe forty percent is what we're hoping for. And so we'll just push more vouchers out there. Now, we want to find a better way to increase the traveler stays through this program. And really, it's creating a step beforehand that if you book a room, you get a voucher, right? Finding a different way that we can engage the traveler, get their participation, get their buy-in, increase lodging stays, and really let them know about the program. So we're gonna try to find a better way of getting that engagement. But overall, you know, we heard great feedback from businesses and lodging properties. The engagement this program received is a building block in developing the awareness that Alamosa is the gateway for the National Park. I think that's something that we, we've always known as community members, but we've never acknowledged. And this was kind of our way of saying, this is who we are, this is who we represent, and this is our National Park, and we're the gateway towards that. So felt like we accomplished a lot with this program and at least starting that building. Besides that, that is my presentation, pretty quick and easy there and pretty fast through those numbers, so I'm happy to answer any questions. But again, thank you guys for your support. It's what made it possible. We had an idea, we needed to find some funding to expand this beyond what we probably wanted to do. So between you, the county, and SLV federal, and then of course with the National Parks participation in this were, made it possible. And we're happy with the results.
Thank you, Kail, for that presentation. If you don't mind, I'm going to have Council ask you questions, okay? So if you, Council Hensley, Council Hensley?
So thank you very much for the presentation. I will say, you and your team do a fantastic job. It has been a great partnership. I'm very blessed because I'm on that board and it's one of the most, I guess, rewarding boards to be on because of things that have happened and things that we're able to do. I'm always one of those ones who tries to look at the bright side of things. And so obviously COVID, it happened. And so one of the bright sides of it, though, it has really helped, I think, our tourism, the whole push to being outdoors. So from our, that's our big focus is the outdoors. And so this has been fantastic. But you and your team have truly taken this and run with it and kept that optimistic. And how do we think outside the box? So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I can't stress enough, and I think you hit on it well, is there's a collaborative spirit here, right? And when we get these different entities working together for the same love of a national park, right, we're able to do a lot of great things. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Council Hensley. Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Kail, I just wanted to say thank you for the type of presentation you brought to share this information. I think the data, along with the soft stuff, was very, very helpful. So I loved seeing, I like Twitter, I'm not on a lot of other social media, I know that says how old I am, but we're just gonna go with it. But I really liked the, the things that were being shown, the things that were being said about Alamosa. And I felt like it was very well done and easy for people to share and easy to understand. But to see the numbers coming back from that, like, it felt really good, but it did really well. And so I just want to say thank you for sharing the details that you did and doing all of the work to analyze the, the work that you and your team did. So thank you for the presentation and thank you for the hard work.
Absolutely. And I couldn't say that it's not really work we enjoy looking at those things, right? That's why we're marketers. We like the creative side of things, but now we want to look at the numbers of things.
Okay, thank you, Council Daniel. I don't see Council Brawls. I don't know if you would like to make a comment or not. So if you would like to raise your hand, if not, we'll keep going. Okay, go ahead. All right.
No, I appreciate what the marketing district does. And I think that, you know, their presentation was, was good. And it's, it's a good, it's a good start. And I think you'll see, we'll see it keep growing in the future. So thank you, Kyle, for all that, and we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Council Brawls. I don't see any other lights lit up, so I'll wrap things up. Kail, thank you so very much. I really liked the presentation and showing the rate of return on your investment that you put into it. Very powerful. And also, I'm glad to see that the businesses are buying in and they would like to see more of this in the future. That's gonna help our overall community, so keep up the great work. Really impressed.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Okay, so since we have you here, and Ms. Brooks moved you up on the agenda so we can maximize your, your time up here. We'll go ahead and go to the next item on the agenda is the business brought forward by city staff. We're gonna go ahead and move item 3A to 1A. And it's the first reading of ordinance number eleven, twenty-twenty-one. And ordinance approving a memorandum of agreement with Alamosa Convention and Visitors Bureau establishing a destined development position.
Thank you, Mayor. We covered a lot that night, that we looked at what we wanted to spend the ARPA funds. But this was one of the items we briefly discussed and earmarked in that spreadsheet for the use of the ARPA funds. This is another partnership with the marketing board and the CBB to reclassify and reposition one of their positions to focus on destination type of events and, and to try to strengthen those events that we currently have that will attract visitors even more. And then where there might be gaps as far as regular types of events to, that really can attract a visitor as well, to, to work with partners to fill in some of those gaps. And so Council had done a motion related to the ARPA funds. It is ten thousand per year until 2026. And we'll have discussions on how we think that position's working probably at that point in time. But the IGA before you is to continue with that partnership and try to impact our local businesses even more. Kail is here, the position will report to Kail, but obviously we will work closely.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. Okay, Council Hensley?
If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and move that we approve ordinance number eleven, twenty-twenty-one on first reading and set for public hearing on July twenty-first at seven PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No? Okay. If not, Ms. Michelle, will you please take vote?
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, discussion on WWTF screw pump assessment.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
At the last council meeting, I shared that under our emergency purchasing authority, that we had ordered the bearings for two pumps. One had seized up and the other one was probably likely to do so at some point. We had a few council members who were wondering if that was the only improvement or fix that needed to be made. Harry did look into it. Based on the use of the screw pumps, the first one that, that locked up in 2012 had been used continuously. We weren't rotating it. And so it was getting a lot of use. It locked up. When they were here, they also pulled it, did a full inspection, sandblasted the interior and exterior, assessed it. And at that point in 2012, it was about eighty thousand. And so if we were to do something similar, we anticipate that it would be probably at least a hundred thousand per screw pump. But the other reason we are still recommending that we not do it is we learned in 2012 that we should rotate them. And so the other pumps have only been used since 2012 and we have been rotating them. So we think their condition is much better. They, we don't think they've seen the same wear and tear as, as the one that was getting used all the time between nineteen ninety-five and 2012. So staff's recommendation is that we still just spend the approximate twenty-six thousand for the bearing, since this was unfunded. However, since there were a few questions on if we should be looking more deeply into that, we did want to report back to Council. Harry, did I leave anything out?
No, I think, I think you covered it quite well. I think what we have is, you know, our wastewater treatment plant, if we're gonna compare it to a car is, you know, we've got a car with a hundred thousand miles on it, you know, it runs well, it doesn't burn any oil. But we do need to replace the oil, you know, the shocks, the tires, just do the general maintenance. So the screw pump is basically, it's, it's three pieces. You've got the cylinders for that carry the sludge up into the facility. That sets on a set of bearings and it's driven by a gearbox. So in the future, if we were to put money towards stuff, and I think we do have it in the CIP, is we need to look at the, the drive parts of it just as the motors are kind of outdated and, and their gearbox at some point will need to be modified. But we have a plan for that in the future, but currently I think just the screw pumps themselves are in good shape.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Harry, okay, so we need a motion on this one right here?
If, if Council is good with the direction of just doing the bearings, I don't think we need a motion. Otherwise, we, we would probably want a motion.
Okay, we're good with it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Brings us to the next item on the agenda, on the police. Public hearing in second reading for ordinance number eight dash twenty-twenty-one. And ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with with the Alamosa County Department of Human Services, and with the Colorado State Patrol, Alamosa County Sheriff's Office, and Adam State University Police Department for interdisciplinary action in response to child abuse cases.
Mayor?
Captain Mestes, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
This is the second reading, as the chief explained before, and I'm sure Captain Mestes can explain as well. This is essentially just setting out on paper what the role of each agency is, to try to make sure if you have changes in those agencies, that's not lost as far as what the process is. And it's just, it's a partnership.
Okay. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing, in this, for the second reading of ordinance number 8-2021, and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement. Okay. So if you're in the audience, and you would like to come up to the podium to make any comments in regards to this ordinance, please feel free to come up. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience coming up, so I'll go ahead and close, well, let me check the attendee.
I'm not seeing any attendees.
See anyone there? Okay. So, since there's no one in the audience, and we don't have any attendees who would like to make any comments, we'll go ahead now and close the public hearing, and bring it back to council. Council Vehill?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 8-2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, Ms. O'Shea, would you please take the vote?
Council Brawls?
Yes.
Council Vehill?
Yes.
Council Carson?
Yes.
Council Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, first reading, ordinance number 9-2021, and ordinance establishing a ban on camping on public property within the city of Alamosa without express permission from the city.
Thank you, Mayor. This puts in place something that we thought already existed, which is that there should not be any camping on public property, which includes sidewalks, alleyways, trails, parks, et cetera, within the city limits unless there is permission. Obviously, within our community, we do have a few locations that, that permit this. St. Benedict Campsite is one. And there are times that the Boy Scouts might be doing a camp, or our volunteers, when they're building the trails, and express permission would be granted at that point in time. This just allows us to do the enforcement without everything needing to be posted.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. Okay, Council Vehill?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 9-2021 on first reading, and set it for a public hearing on July 7th or soon thereafter.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. O'Shea, will you please take the vote?
And I believe Council Vehill said the-
I know. It's, it's, that should say July 21st.
Okay. Council Brawls?
Yes.
Council Vehill?
Yes.
Council Carson?
Yes.
Council Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Mayor, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Brings us to the next item on the agenda, first reading of ordinance number 10-2021, and ordinance limiting the parking of trailers and recreational vehicles on streets and alleys.
Thank you, Mayor. As staff was discussing the previous item, we were also finding out from police if there are other areas where they were challenged in their ability to enforce a difference in what the ordinance might be intending versus any loopholes that might exist. And this is one of those that has been a challenge for police to enforce. We currently have a restriction of 72 hours for any RVs, tractor trailers, camper trailers, utility trailers, et cetera, that can be parked on a city street. Oftentimes, if police are called to the scene to respond, sometimes the individuals can, can be interesting, and they can move their vehicle one foot, and then technically, they're not in violation anymore. We don't believe that's what the intent of the ordinance is, and it doesn't help us address the concerns that we're receiving from the neighbors. So what we want to do is keep the 72 hours, but then add an item that if they've been there for 72 hours, then they cannot have that vehicle anywhere else parked on a city street for 14 days. Now, they can park it appropriately on their property, in their driveway, somewhere like that, but that they're just, it needs to be removed from a city street. We feel that is an easier way to enforce this. And then it also is flexible for someone who might need to bring the RV back after two weeks and unload it, or do some things like that. While meeting with a council member, it was shared that maybe there's a narrow circumstance that this does not work very well, and that is if someone is currently seeking shelter at the homeless shelter at La Puente. They may have a, a trailer that has some of their items, and La Puente does not have a driveway or a place to be able to appropriately park that. So for that narrow type of circumstance, what we felt is that if they wanted to park it out by St. Benedict, not in St. Benedict, but outside of it, that we would allow that while they're, while they're utilizing the shelter at La Puente.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. I have two lights on. I think Council Vehill had you first. Okay, you go first. Okay, good. Council Daniel?
Thank you, and thank you, Council Vehill. So, I've been thinking about this one a lot, and I, I'm still struggling. And so I just want to be really honest with that. I also wonder about even people who have, like, well, I guess, what, what is the problem we're trying to solve? Is it, there are trailers in front of other people's properties, and the police can't get them to move? Like, so outside my house, my neighbor parks their camper, and I'm frustrated? Or what, what is the, the challenge?
So, it's twofold. The first one is, it's challenging for police to have an ordinance that people expect us to enforce, and it has a big hole like this. So it, it's hard to respond to a situation where there's a 72-hour, the neighbors are upset, and we're not really able to effectively address that. The other issue, though, is there's times neighbors may not get along. It's like our other nuisance issues, that we're not out looking for this, because in all honesty, camper trailers are technically supposed to be parked beyond, behind the building front of the buildings. If you drive around, you're gonna see that there's a lot that are parked in the side, and, and things like that. But if it's blocking views from a perspective of someone wanting to pull out of their driveway, or if it's near a corner, or things like that, and I think some people feel that those shouldn't be on the street, hence why the ordinance has been written. So it's more to try to make it to where we can enforce it, not that we're just creating the situation of where they shouldn't be parked on the streets. That was already limited.
Okay, thank you. Council Vehill, followed by Council Carson?
Thank you, Mayor, and kind of agree with Council Daniel on some of these, where this is coming from. I, I guess, a question that I have is, especially here in the immediate neighborhood, there's a lot of folks who have driveways that, that aren't behind a property, and there isn't an alleyway. They just have a long driveway that goes up to the side of their house. And if, and here it says, behind the front line of the dwelling, what does that mean?
Do you want to explain that?
Is that where the beginning of my house starts?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, it's, it's your, it's your building, your house building. So, that isn't addressed in this ordinance at all, but the UDC requires that if you're storing a camper or a trailer on your property, that it be back from the street behind the, where your house starts.
I under, I understand getting them, getting them off the street, especially with that 72 hours, I'm good with that, but a lot of folks don't have enough driveway to, to do, to accomplish that.
So in other communities that do enforce this, it's, they can rent a storage place to store their trailer or their, their RV. And so, again, this ordinance, we're not changing that, that's not what's before you tonight.
Okay, well, if I have someone come and visit me, and they bring their RV or their pop-up camper, and they, and they're here for a week, can they park it in my driveway?
Technically, no, but unless your neighbors tell on you, it's not as if we are enforcing that. They cannot be camping in the trailer, though.
Okay. And then what about folks who, who go up to the mountains and get wood, and they ha, they put on a trailer, and they park it in their driveway? Can they not have it there for a while? They have to get rid of their wood, and then move their trailer? That doesn't make sense to me. If it's on their, if it's in their property.
So most people unload it into a wood stack next to the house. So they have 72 hours to do that. But again, what's before you tonight, only if it's parked on the street. We're not dealing with any ordinances on where these other, where they're supposed to be parked.
Okay.
We can. I mean, if you want to revisit that section of the UDC, we can do that, but, but that's not what's before you tonight.
Okay. Council Carson, you had your light on, but you turned it off?
No, it's on, I don't know what happened.
Okay, so if you could talk into the mic. Thank you, sir.
So did any of this, I mean, I know that some of this came from people, I know that they called me with complaints about people that were like, some, living in their RVs, living in some vehicles on that street, on State Street where La Puente's at. Did, did you guys get a, a big volume of complaints about that kind of issue in general, or is this coming from a different?
We do get complaints of vehicles that have been parked for a long period of time in front of La Puente. So that is one location that we do get them. But we get them in other locations as well. So about a month ago, we had a woman who was not very happy because the work trailers, her, her neighbor was parking two of them on the block and leaving them for an extended amount of time. So, again, we're not changing the 72-hour, we're not changing anything like that. What we're saying is, if we're going to have this, and we're going to enforce it, then we need to change it somehow. If you don't care, then when someone calls to complain, and you guys want to change that, and at a next meeting, and someone calls to complain, we can simply tell them there's nothing that restricts that. But there are calls that we do get.
And we're talking same situation at Walmart, or a city market, or when they have a vehicle that's-
That's private property.
This doesn't affect that?
Correct. That's private property, and they would control it how they see fit.
That entity could do whatever they do.
Yes, sir.
So, I guess, the question I have for council is, do we want to, because I agree with, I agree with the, the ordinance, we do have to give it some teeth, because right now, you know, the fact that they can move it one foot, kind of stinks. So do we want to modify this and shorten the period? Do we want to, you know, is that what we want to talk about here? Because I think that we do need to give it some teeth, but I think there's concerns with the amount of time, the 14 days is what, what the major concern is, or the 72 hours?
My only, I, I, again, I'm good with the stuff on public streets, moving it, especially with people living in a camper by La Puente, I'm, I'm good with all that. My concern is on people's private driveways, and really enforcing that stuff. I don't know, I don't think we should be getting involved in that.
Thank you, Council Vehill, Council Carson. Council Hensley?
So I think you kind of answered one part in regards to that you are getting the phone calls not, from different areas. I do think, I do know of people where people do come visit, they bring their trailer or the camper. They're not living in the camper, they're staying there, but they have nowhere really to put the camper, so they might be there for a week or so. And maybe it's somebody who doesn't have a driveway, or somewhere where they can pull that in. And so, I guess, I, I just, I think I'm like everybody else. I'm, I guess I see the point to it, but it, it's, I guess, in some ways, sort of a little, I have concerns of getting super strict on this. I don't know, I guess that's my thoughts. It's just, and so I guess one of my thoughts is, if it was really an issue, and a neighbor was upset, and they called, is it something that it could just be moved further away? Instead of saying one foot, can we make it a longer?
So our, our original item that we discussed was to move it about 500 feet. So it was a, a distance when we originally discussed it. It's a little less effective on deterring certain behavior, but that was our, our initial thought type of thing. And you're still impacting, you're just impacting different neighbors. So-
And I, I, will you tell me about, is 500 feet, like, is that a block, two blocks? Okay.
It's about a block, yeah. So that's why we picked it, is to try to make it inconvenient for the person who's parking it. But again, it, it doesn't address it as the time. But that was what we had originally discussed as an option.
I guess my thought there is, because if it is something where it's a neighbor, just sort of, if there's those little battles or things like that, that it still allows for that situation. I don't know. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
What I am hearing, though, is a desire probably from Counselor Vehill to discuss the UDC in regards to what's allowed on private property. I'm not hearing from you necessarily concern on the street. Okay. And so what's before you tonight is the street. So if someone was visiting in a camper, and they were parking in their driveway, and put the camper there, that's not this situation right now.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Council Daniel?
Thank you. Sorry, I had a headlock with this one. But the, the other thing is, they agree, or I think Counselor Carson was starting this conversation, I think 14 days is too long. I, I agree with Counselor Hensley about the, I would support the 500 feet. I, I understand the concern about that moving, the challenge. But I also think that inconvenience is the person who's moving the vehicle, I think in a way to hopefully deter negative behavior. Because I do think that they're, having us a no city street parking for two weeks, I feel like that is too, I do feel like that's too long. So, but I would support the 500 feet, or even two blocks, like a thousand, I mean, whatever staff recommends for a distance, I just don't support the time.
Okay, Counselor, thank you, Counsel Daniel. Counsel Carson?
Um-
Council member, just, I just want to share, if you want to substitute in tonight for first reading a distance, you can do that. And then we can write it up appropriately for the second reading. I'm sorry, Counselor Carson, I just wanted to make sure you knew you had that option.
Well, I mean, this is one of those issues that, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily want to open a can of worms, but I, I would think that we could set for public hearing, and then see if we do get any input from here to there. I, I kind of get the feeling that the, the front of the house is the concern. You know, that exists anyway, in, with or without this. So I, I was gonna make a motion that we, that we approve it as is, and set for public hearing. But if we want to modify it, then I suggest somebody come up with something.
All right, I'll try if you're okay with it. So what I'll do is move to approve ordinance number 10-2021 with the alternative of number four, of changing the reset limit from the time to distance. For instance, requiring that the vehicle be moved at least 500 feet from its prior location before it can again be parked for 72 hours on its first reading, and set this for public hearing for July 21st, 2021. Did I do that right?
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, talk into the mic.
So do we believe that, does anybody have an issue with the 72 hours? Is that because, one of the, one of the comments I heard was a week. You know, you have somebody visiting for a week, you have somebody coming over for a week. So, I was actually thinking of modifying it differently, changing that and shortening the week, the 14 days to a week, kind of just splitting it. But I don't know if, if that's too short of, that's three days, that's, I don't know if that's too short of a time. Are we being too stringent there?
Well, if you're talking about somebody visiting and staying in their camper-
No, I'm just saying if they're visiting for a week, I mean, I get it, that's a long time, you know, have a visitor, but-
I see.
You know, if it's four days, and they've got their camper parked in front of your house, again, we're, we're barring no neighbors call and complain, you know, we don't have that issue. But is that an issue for anybody? I'm just putting that out there, asking that question. Because it seemed like it may be. I don't care either way. But I'm just making sure we've covered the bases.
Seems like we got a consensus on the motion.
All right.
Okay?
All right, I'm good.
All right, thank you, Counsel Carson. Okay, Ms. O'Shea, will you take the vote?
Council Brawls?
Yes.
Council Vehill?
Yes.
Council Carson?
Yes.
Council Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Christina Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Can I ask a quick question? Do you mind?
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry. So I just want to make sure. So what this is saying, so let's say we have somebody who happens to be visiting for a week and there is an upset. So if somebody has it there, they can move it five hundred feet away, have it there for seventy-two hours and then bring it back to use up their week or whatever needed. Okay. I just want to make sure I was understanding that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I also want, um, Counselor V Hill to know, I do have a note that it may not be the next meeting. Um, I want to give Deacon some time to look at the UDC and make sure if we change one part, it doesn't trickle into others, but we'll bring that back for discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Brings us to the next item, discussion on Ameri-, the American Rescue Plan funding.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, part of the reason I needed to add this is, um, our staff's pretty amazing and they read the news that comes across and what's going on in the state. And Andy realized that Colorado Springs was using their ARPA funds to fix their irrigation system at a few of their golf courses. We weren't sure if that was ineligible use. Um, we, um, Lisa researched it just because another city's doing it doesn't always mean that we agree. Um, so Lisa did research it. We do feel that it would qualify as a project because, um, the main reason it's even on our radar, but we also have a study behind it is the efficiency of the system. Um, it's outdated, um, it's wasting water and we know we need to conserve out there because of the water situation. And so because of that, we do feel that it would be eligible for ARPA funds. And so what I need direction from counsel tonight is, um, if you would be comfortable. Oops, I'm sorry. I'm on the, I was on the wrong, that's why it looked different. Uh, if you would like us to add the irrigation, the replacement of the irrigation system. So just quickly, um, we expect to get two point four million. Here are some projects that we've already talked about. The reason these are highlighted are those are three that we submitted for additional CARES funding. So they might get removed, um, from this list, which would free up, um, more funding. Um, and then right in this area is when we talked about some of the, um, public works projects that are already in our CIP. So again, if I take some of these off from being funded through ARPA, that does not mean they're not going to happen. They're still in the CIP. And so I want to make sure I'm very clear with that. This would be from anywhere from nine hundred thousand to a million, um, if we were to do this project. We do anticipate that we would be very competitive for grants because it was listed in our water efficiency plan, um, as a project. And so I don't think the full cost would have to hit ARPA. But again, this has been looming out there. It's thirty years old this year and it's been unfunded. We had no idea how we were going to fund it. The other few things that have changed since we last talked is we initially, I put in here a potential partnership with the county on placing some utilities, um, out at the jointly owned airport property. After research by Ronnie, it was determined that that's actually not an eligible use for the ARPA funds. So I took that ninety thousand out. And then this item that's highlighted is the bearings that we're ordering for the screw pumps. You guys hadn't fully decided if you wanted to use ARPA funds for that. But if I put the nine hundred thousand, um, it gets us within seventy thousand. Um, so again, we're going after grants. We're doing all of that. So that's a pretty good place to be. And I just wanted to get direction from counsel if you would like us to pursue that project.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. I see, uh, all right. So I think Counselor V Hill had his lit, lit up first, but Counselor Carson's is lit up now. So I'll go ahead. And then we'll go back to Counselor Daniel. Okay. So you want to turn yours off?
One question. Um, is there any idea at all what the gain is? That we're, you know, what, what we're losing right now that we will gain in that back nine? Cause I know we're, we're bleeding water back there. I know there's a lot of water that's being lost, but just from a number standpoint, are we, is it fifty percent? Is, is there any idea? Do you guys have any idea?
I do believe, um, in twenty fourteen, we had an irrigation review and I attached that to the agenda. So I'm just pulling that up quickly. Um, I want to say fourteen percent, but I'm not sure. Uh, um, and again, that was in twenty fourteen. So there's been more wear and tear.
And that was loss, fourteen percent loss at the time?
Or if fourteen percent improvement, if we were to replace the heads and the system.
And that was technology seven years ago.
And the other issue that was identified is it's a very manual, um, system. And so it, it's not, we have to manually go turn on the different spots or turn back, turn off the different spots. So I'm trying to make sure I pull the right number because we, it also covered the front nine. So I don't want to give you the number that's for the front nine.
But there is quite a bit of gain there.
There is gain. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. All right. Counselor V Hill, then Counselor Daniel.
So Heather asked us if we're comfortable using this money for the, for the back nine, and I'm not comfortable. And I know I've been, I've been up here for seven years talking about saving water and I'm, I'm really with that. But we've, I, I think with this money, it should go to as many, uh, water projects and wastewater treatment facilities and all that stuff first before we get to this. That's where I, that's where I stand. Um, I, I have read this report that you attached and, um, at the time, the back nine wasn't a lot better conditioned than the front, the front nine. And also over the last three or four years, we've, have thrown a lot of money at the golf course with the front nine replacement, with new lawn mowers and new this and new this and this. I thi-, and I think that not a lot of people, well, a, a certain amount of people in our community use the golf course. But everybody uses wastewater treatment facility. Everybody uses, um, infrastructure underneath our roads and that. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor, uh, V Hill. Counselor, um, Daniel, then followed by Counselor Hensley and Counselor Carson.
So I, I understand Counselor V Hill's perspective and I, I almost have the complete opposite perspective other than, um, I agree with you that everybody uses, you know, all of those other utilities as well and, and the things. What I appreciate about being able to use this funding for this at this time is that this was not in our CIP. This was unfunded. And I think the golf course attracts very, a, a lot of people to our community. And we need to continue to improve that asset. And I think it was a, it, it got behind too far. And so we've had to make up for a lot recently. And I think that that's the challenge. And I think if we now with it being under the city's kind of purview, very much under our control, I think there's going to be a different maintenance of that and a different plan. Um, because this funding can be used for this and because the rest of the projects that would get shifted are already in the CIP and that they will, and they've been planned for, and this isn't going to impact what we had already planned. I am a hundred percent in support of this.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Uh, Counselor Hensley, follow by Counselor Carson.
So I would add, um, the same thing as Counselor Daniel said, so I support that. I think also, so I'm on the golf board, so I've sat, sat in on a lot of these meetings. And so in all honesty, the back could fail at any point. And then we'd really be in the challenge of what do we do? Nine hundred thousand is a large amount of money or even a million dollars to just pull out of thin air where the other things are covered in CIP. I was going to say a few facts.
Counselor Hensley, just for, just to clarify whether you have a conflict. When you say you're on the golf board, are you a voting member of the board or are you?
I'm the city, I'm the city representative.
So that's your liaison position?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I sit in those meetings and hear all the things that are going on.
Right.
So I was going to report, um, when it came to, uh, the reports. If you don't mind, I'm just going to say a couple of things to show some major growth that's been happening just since the conversation has come up. And so when you look at it, that idea there that, um, the plan for twenty twenty-one was five thousand five hundred and fifty-seven rounds to be played. We've already hit four thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight. So we are going to go past the amount of rounds by a major amount. It used to be a, uh, kind of a big deal if we had two hundred rounds in a day. Now that is commonplace. It is happening very, very regularly. Um, there is, I could sit here and read all sorts of different growths. Um, we're having major, major upswing, um, right now. And part of it is the front nine does look really good. It obviously has the new system, having the golf carts, things like that. This is really becoming a tourist attraction. It's also becoming an attraction for people to move here, which is another from an economic development. The other thing I'll add too, and I'm not, I, I don't want to leave anybody out, but a lot of our community members are also volunteering and donating as well. So there's, there's things such as needing, uh, some stuff worked on in the back. And so a trencher was donated to do that. Sod has been donated. Concrete has been donated. Labor has been donated. REC came out and fixed some things that needed to be fixed. So I feel also we're getting the support from the community as well. Um, so anyway, I would be in support of this for those reasons.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Carson?
Um, I guess the question I have is, this is about forty percent, is this about forty percent? If we went the whole nine hundred, is that about forty percent of what we're getting? Or is it two point six million?
It, it's two point four million.
Two point four. Um, can this money be directly used for, uh, like street? Like let's say if you had to replace the sewer underneath the street. Can't be used to repave the street, right?
Correct. We can replace the sewer under the street if we needed to. So just to, to recap a little, like the projects here under public works that we had listed that we might use it are still going to get done. It's, so as Counselor Daniels indicated, it doesn't take away from it and to coun-
No, I'm, I'm aware of that. I was just curious as like if we had a shortfall in some of these projects that we were using, you know, our street tax for, if one year like.
We don't, we're not using our street tax to pay for the stuff underneath. The enterprise fund is performing well enough that it's keeping up thus far. We're only a year and a half into it with the street tax, but we are monitoring that. And so for the next five years, we already have everything out of the enterprise fund to go along with the street tax.
Okay. So once this is all said and done, or I guess do we have to earmark this money now? And then once this is all said and done, you know, let's say grant money's coming in and we take that nine hundred thousand down to six hundred thousand. That three hundred thousand that we've saved there can then that, can that be redirected into some of this?
Absolutely. So that's why I've left them on this list. So we don't lose track of what we were focused on, on wanting to do. I didn't just want to take them off. So if we do get grants, um, then those savings would allow us to repurpose it towards the savings. But again, the project's going to get done either way. It just frees up more money in the enterprise fund. And I want to go down because I feel like I neglected to say this. Um, it still allows us to do the fund in the amount that we thought we wanted to do, which was a four hundred thousand development, um, and housing reserve. And there was one thing Counselor Hensley said that was a strong driver on why we did the front nine that I feel I neglected to emphasize when I talked about this is that the front nine was failing. And if we didn't replace the system, then we have a, a nine hole course. And I think when counsel discussed it at that point in time, with the amount of money that had been invested to walk away from that for a nine hole, which is very different, um, was something counsel was not comfortable with. While we do not have this system failing at the same degree as the front nine was at that point in time, um, sorry, I got distracted. It is at thirty years and it will start failing. And so when it does, I do not have a way to even have the match for the grants. The, the rec fund is too tight. And that's why for the front nine, we had to take it out of the general fund. So the general fund is becoming equally as tight as the rec fund.
Okay. On a, on a personal note, I'll make the comment that that back nine failing would really, really be a big blow to that golf course. Cause, uh, from a golf standpoint, that is a beautiful back nine. It plays really well. It flows well. It's great. Um, with that being said, uh, because Counselor V Hill had concerns, I'm going to ask that, or I'm going to go ahead and make a motion.
If you can, if you don't mind, one moment, Counselor Brawls hasn't had a chance to speak.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And, um, so Counselor Brawls?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with Counselor Daniels and Counselor Hensley. That, uh, you know, uh, that funding would be important and, you know, and I, and saving water, saving water, whether we do on a golf course or elsewhere. So if we're saving water by the new system, uh, I'd be in favor of that. So no, I, I would be, and I would be in favor of using those funds for the back nine.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Back to you, Counselor Carson.
I was just going to go ahead and say that we probably, is, is it more appropriate that we make a motion to provide direction since Counselor V Hill had some, some concerns? I'll make that motion that, uh, we give staff direction to, um, use the unfunded, to give direction in the unfunded irrigation system for the back nine of the golf course and should be added to the ARPA funding plan.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. We have a motion?
A second.
And a second? Any further discussion? No, I just like a brief comment. Um, the golf course, it is a community asset. We've heard from several community partners like the hospital, ASU, who oftentimes try to recruit individuals to come to our community and live. And one of the things that makes an positive impression on those recruits is the golf course. Um, for those who've had an opportunity to go out there lately, uh, you can tell that it has improved tremendously. And by using these funds in this manner, it's just going to increase the use of the golf course, also increase the quality and help promote more economic positive impact in our community. Okay. So Ms. LaShelle, if you could take the vote?
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
No.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one with Counselor V Hill casting the no vote.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to the next item. On the agenda, uh, we have the committee reports. Do we have any committee reports at this time? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we did have the Alamosa Housing Authority meeting recently and they are really, um, invested. We have the new, uh, member Dawn, she's been doing a great job. And Rachel has been coming and we are creating, I think, a really strong relationship. Like it feels, uh, really positive and lots of good movement. And I think they're, the team at the Housing Authority, the Housing Authority Commissioners are really, I think, engaged in the process. And so I just wanted to say I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel for that update. Okay? All right. I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom and no red lights. So we'll move on down to staff announcements.
Mayor, we do not have any staff announcements.
What? Is that a first?
I know.
Okay. All right. Moving on down to, um, item local liquor licensing authority action. We have a simple consent calendar B, uh, tonight, which basically means it's a consent calendar B. We don't have to go into too much discussion on this. All right. So, um, Counsel, uh, V Hill?
I move that we, uh, approve consent calendar B.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, real quick, I want to acknowledge, uh, the early iron folks here. And we're really happy that they're coming back this year and all the visitors and tourists and money you're going to bring into our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, um, V Hill. Thank you all for coming up. Okay. So that brings, oh, take the vote.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. Great. All right. That brings us down to, um, the last item on the agenda is the committer, um, council comments. I'm sorry. Council comment. Okay. Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor Daniel?
So I just want to thank everybody for their support. I did get reelected to the CML executive board. Um, it was definitely a lot of people running this time, so I wasn't quite sure. But I did, um, go in, so I'm on for another two years. Um, and I actually go to my, um, executive board retreat tomorrow, um, in Steamboat Springs. So thank you very much.
All right. You're welcome. Good job. You, you represent us well all the time, Counselor Hensley. We're glad to have you representing our community. Okay. Counselor, um, Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So we didn't actually give Andy a lot of comments for Parks and Recs, Parks and Rec Month. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for that work. Um, you all are doing a fantastic job. You all are doing a fantastic job with everything that is going on. And so I hope you get to celebrate a little bit this July as it is your month. So, so good, good luck with that. Again, want to congratulate Liz, Counselor Hensley, excuse me, for her appointment at CML. I believe she represents small rural communities very well at that level. And I think that has been wonderful. The other thing is I've just been hearing great things about our staff. I've been hearing wonderful things from the police to the finance department to our new development. Like everything seems to be going well and people are talking about it, which means that it's going really well because we know that people only talk about things when they go bad sometimes. And so the fact that people are going out of their way to share with us the positive things that are happening means that they're happening very consistently. And I just want to say thank you so much to the team because you all make the rest of us look good. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counselor Daniel. So do I see any other lights on before I go to Counselor Brawls? No? Okay. Counselor Brawls, did you have any comments you want to make at this time? You're muted. Yeah. You're, you're muted, Counselor Brawls. You're muted.
Oh, I just want to say, I just want to say thank you to the council. Let me attend by Zoom. And I, I agree with Counselor Daniels. I hear a lot of good things in town. And I, I really appreciate our staff and the city and all of us who worked, who worked so well together. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So I don't see any more lights on or hands raised. So I'll just wrap things up. Once again, thanks to the Early Iron crew here, Mike, Ronnie, and the whole team with Early Iron for all the wonderful things you do. And we're looking forward to that event coming to our city. It has a huge economic positive impact as well. Also, I'd like to thank the Alamosa County Chamber and the young professionals who put on a wonderful job of the Fourth of July Parade and all the city participants who participated, including some of the staff members, all of those I saw out there as well. Thank you so much for making that a success. Counselor Daniel was talking about the staff and the positive comments. I, I can agree with her. I've been receiving some of those same positive comments from people throughout the community about the works that, that you all are doing. So just encourage you to keep doing a great job and just know the little things that you do make a huge difference. And that's all I have for tonight, everybody. Oh, did you have something, Counselor? Okay. All right. No further discussion. This meeting is adjourned.